Good afternoon, everyone. I know we have a large crowd out here tonight, so we'll give it everyone an opportunity to be, you know, heard. First of all, I'd like to welcome you to the Russell County Board of Supervisors, October the 2nd, 2023, at 6:00 PM at the Russell County Board of Supervisors. I'd like to first start off with a call to order and roll call. Tim Lovelace.
Here, I finally got through the crowd.
Right in time. Carl Ray.
Here.
David Eaton.
Here.
Steve Brady.
Here.
Rebecca Di.
Here.
Horace Christian.
Present.
Luann Wallace.
Here.
Ma'am, you have a quorum.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'm going to ask for the invocation. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, Lord, we love you, we thank you, and we praise you today, Father. Father, forgive us for where we fail you each and every day, and, Lord, thank you for allowing us to be a part of our local government, Father. Help us be more like you each and every, and every day. In your name, we pray.
Amen.
Amen. The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and at this time, I'm going to ask for an approval of the agenda, please.
So moved.
I have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussions? Hearing none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. At this time this evening, we've got a presentation by Ms. Kimberly Hooker, and that is our school superintendent for Russell County. Please come on up and thank you, Ms. Hooker.
Thank you.
Pleasure to have you.
Madam Chair and members of the board, I stand before you today to address a matter of utmost importance: the compensation of our dedicated administrators, teachers, and staff. The success of any school depends heavily on the individuals who work tirelessly behind the scenes and in the classrooms. Our administrative staff ensures the efficient operation of schools. Our faculty members are the heart of education, and their support staff plays an indispensable role in creating a safe and nurturing environment for our students. Today, a teacher discrepancy has become a critical matter. Between the last three years, we have lost over sixty faculty and staff to neighboring higher-paying counties. Our teachers are more than just instructors. They are mentors, role models, and advocates for our children's success. They invest countless hours in planning lessons, grading assignments, and supporting students both academically and emotionally. Their dedication goes beyond the classroom, often involving participation in extracurricular activities and engaging with parents to ensure a holistic educational experience. However, the current state of teacher salaries in Russell County does not reflect the immense value they bring to our community. As the cost of living continues to rise, it is imperative that we recognize the financial challenges our educators face. Competitive compensation is not only a matter of fairness, but also a strategic investment in the future of our schools and the overall quality of education and the survival of our community. When our teachers and staff are fairly compensated, we can attract and retain the best talent, ensuring a stable, experienced faculty and staff. The stability creates positive environment for learning, where students can thrive under the guidance of experienced faculty and staff who are motivated and fulfilled in their roles. This problem did not happen overnight, but I urge you to consider the long-term consequences of low-paying salaries. Insufficient salaries can lead to burnout, high turnover rates, and ultimately, a decline in the quality of education our students receive. By addressing this concern now, we can demonstrate our commitment to the well-being of both our educators and our students. I have a folder that I have shared with you tonight that will give you insight into the problem. The school board and I realize it is a problem. Like I stated previously, this problem did not happen overnight, and we are certainly not going to fix it overnight. However, we think it is time for our boards to come together to work toward a solution. We are conducting an operational audit by an outside group that began last week and should be completed in December. It is our desire to know if there's anything that we can do to help our employees get higher salaries and wages. The folder also has information on salaries that are compared to the state and Region 7 divisions. This information is the 2022-23, and it came from the Virginia Education Association. This, this year's salaries won't be printed until December. There's information on the county's appropriation that shows we have been level-funded for the last several years. We have given enrollment numbers at each school and the teacher-to-student ratio. We have not replaced several teachers when they have retired or left. There's also information on how our administrators are paid from the school to the central office level. Our administrators only get a raise on their teacher-based pay. There is a lot of misconception that they get a raise on their supplement and the two extra months they work beyond a ten-month contract. I have also included a central office comparison of surrounding counties. I think that you will find that our central office staff salaries are not inflated. If you look at the central office staffing comparison, you will see that our supervisors have multiple responsibilities, where in other counties, the person only has one job responsibility. As I stated in the beginning of my presentation, all administrators, faculty, and staff are vital for our schools to be successful. You cannot have one without the other, and collaboration among all of us is essential for the success of our division. In conclusion, we are asking that you prioritize the equitable compensation of our faculty and staff. Let us acknowledge their tireless efforts and dedication by providing them with salaries that reflect their vital contributions. By doing so, we invest in the foundation of our community's future success. Thank you. And I'd also like to say that I have had the privilege to talk to Mr. Eaton and Mr. Lester about this before I had the presentation, and I appreciate the open dialogue, and I hope that we, both boards, can continue to do that. Great, great group of people, and I want to thank the school board members, the administrators, the faculty and staff for coming out and supporting me. I'm very humbled by that.
Thank you, Ms. Hooker.
Thank you.
Can we, can we ask some questions?
Sure.
Okay. I applaud you for doing this analysis, that, you know, the way Lonzo were, you know, explaining to me, it's like an efficiency analysis. They'll look at all aspects of what you're doing. And I think it's a great thing. David and I had talked about that several years ago. We didn't get much traction. So, is there a way for the county to be a part of that, to participate in some of the meetings?
Sure. Yes, we can make that happen.
I, I think that would be good to have a liaison, you know, to go with county. And, believe me, I understand. My wife is a former teacher, and I hear it all the time. So, I, I think it would be helpful, maybe, just, you know, to bring information back to the board.
And I know, once they've finished with it, they will, if I would like for them to, they will present to our board, and they can come and present to the Board of Supervisors on what their findings are.
But, but, you know, just doing a presentation like this, I'd sort of skim through it, and I've seen a lot of this before, but, you know, it's going to take a little while to sit down and digest it, you know, compared to the other areas. So, you know, maybe having somebody involved in it, you know, you can even, maybe Mr. Lester could be involved.
That's fine.
I really appreciate Ms. Hooker and for, you know, I always say it, since I've been elected for eight years, that this is so critical for us, because if we're not competitive, we can't ever catch up. And the way that the money's sent down to us from the state, we've been blessed to be able to give the raises, but you're never going to catch up, because everybody else gets the raises around us also. So, I think with this, you know, we talked about hiring an outside independent person to come in and do an evaluation and look at both sides, to look and help us to strategize a way. And I would like to see, not this implemented as just a one-time fix. I think whatever we do, it's going to have to be a long-term, long-range fix that, that is documented and put together on paper, that we don't, it don't matter who sets any seats, we don't change it, we don't evaluate from it, we don't go away from that, but it's going to have to be set in stone, that whatever we do is going to have to be long-term. You know, I know by my review, when I was on the Budget Committee and looking back through the years, there was times that no raises were given. Well, that even puts us further behind. And then there was times that, you know, we've been really fortunate to be able to do the raise, but you're never going to catch up. And there's not a person in this room that's, wants to be competitive. And for us to get somebody to live here, work here, build a home here, and want to stay in Russell County, this is, to me, an industry. It's not just, it's, it's somebody that's taking care of our children, but it's actually six hundred or so employees that, we need to look at that and say, why would you want to come here and work when you can go somewhere else and make ten to fifteen thousand dollars more in a year? To me, on the business side, that don't make no sense to me. So, I think it's going to have to be a combined effort between both boards. We're going to have to really get down in the mud and work this out and see what we need to do to fix this, this critical issue. We've had a lot of cans kicked down the road over the years. We can't blame that now. We gotta, we gotta come to a resolution and fix and see what we can do to, to address this issue. I don't want to lose anybody. But it's all about also the money. You know, you, you spend the money on your education, you go to work, and then you're not fulfilling that, you know, money in your pocket. And I guess years ago, when the coal mines was big and everybody was working good, you know, it might have not have been an issue, but we need to be forward-thinking. We need to think about how we fix our economic woes in our county to be competitive.
I don't think this is anything that can be fixed overnight.
No.
We're going to, we need a plan, as David said, to address this, you know, when we, you know, and we need a target to try to get to. And we need to talk to the state, maybe, about the way they allocate their money as well.
We need to lobby. We talked to Governor Youngkin about this issue with our schools. We had a meeting with him, with him on three different occasions, and told him what we were dealing with, and he was blown away. He couldn't believe that we were so far behind. And, you know, we, we need to lobby. We need to lobby together. We need to go to Richmond. We need to talk to our delegates, our senators, our, and see what they can do to procure maybe a help fix to, to bring the money down here so we can make these, you know, to apply this so we can work toward this fix.
You know, some of that excess budget they had, that two or three billion dollars extra, could have gone a long way towards some of the smaller counties, you know, as far as trying to get parity and equity among all the teachers. But I, I appreciate it, and we're, I'm certainly willing to work with you any way we can.
That's all we're asking, is that, I know the board and I just want to work with you guys to see what we can do.
But we don't need to just talk about it. We don't just need to talk about it.
I'm ready to do something.
I mean, we need to dig down into this thing and, and really fix this issue.
Yeah.
Because it's critical. I mean, we're on, you know, I hate the, the fact that we've lost sixty. You know what I'm saying?
Well, we were talking, if, if we lose, we've actually lost twenty-three this year. If, if this happens next year, what had happened this year, I don't know if we'll be able to operate. So, I mean, it's, it's a critical situation.
Whatever I can do, I'll, I'll help.
I would like to say that this is not just a school board or county situation. It's been, the state's going to have to get involved. We've lost revenue, and also, I think we're going to have to, at least the state, the county, and the Board of Supervisors are going to have to work and come up with some plan. I've told different people, it's not enough what I fixed. I've done, said that. I may echo the same thing they said, but I already spoke that out in the public. So, it's, it's something that we are going to have to really work. Revenue's not there, and people doesn't want to raise taxes. So, we may have to raise taxes, but we need all the help we can get from the state government. And if we, if there's any way possible, it may be the federal government. I want to look at every avenue there is to look at and consider and work aggressively, get that assistance from whatever department, branch of government that we can and need to.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Lester will be, do you need to say anything, Mr. Lester? I'll give you a minute or two.
Just give it me a minute to say. The Board of Supervisors over the last couple of years, we knew that this was coming through. Of course, we went through the pandemic and everything went into a tailspin. But, and when that happened, is, they changed the whole dynamics of the, actually get the skill set, actually teachers. We had the same problem with law enforcement. You, it's hard to get the skill sets, even if you had the funding. It's, it, but the board has been working behind the scenes to look at alternatives, just like, you know, the board members have mentioned this up here. They've been advocating at the state level. We've been looking at the local level. We have also come out of the pandemic, and we have some businesses that are coming online. So, that gives us a lot more opportunity to be able to look at other venues and other ways to be able to assist, you know, the school system and the teachers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you all. So, as the chair, I'm going to ask Mr. Lester if he will be that liaison with you, because I think that brings quality to quality, and we can move faster that way. So, thank you. Appreciate it again.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming and support. Moving on to new business, I need an approval of the minutes. For the unapproved minutes of September the 5th, 2023, please.
So moved, Madam Chair. Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes. All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, motion carries. I'll slow down just a minute if you guys would like to go ahead and make your exit. Can everybody hear? All right, we'll move along. So, I need an approval of expenditures to consider for the present, to present for payments, please.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. I have a motion and a second to approve the bills and pay the bills. All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on your new business is committee appointments for board consideration. First off, we have the Local College Advisory Board, and she has just left the building.
Yeah, I talked to Dr. Hooker, and she would, she's very excited about being on this board, so I'd like to appoint Dr. Hooker to, to your term on the Local College Advisory Board.
Thank you, David. We have a motion for Dr. Hooker on the College Advisory Board. Any further discussions?
They, they normally do point our superintendent, and they've always done a good job, and I, I feel like she will too. They've worked hand-in-hand with what our schools need.
Are you the second, Ms. Di?
I'm the second. Well, you don't really need a second.
All right, we're going to move on, then. We're going to take, all in favor?
No.
Aha.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next, I have the Highway Safety Commission. Ms. Patton, can we take that as a slate?
You can if you want.
If there's a motion, it can be considered that way.
I'll make that motion to do it as a slate. I think, I talked with mine, and he's willing to come back and serve again. Everybody else, I think, you talked with your reps. Okay, well, I'll make that motion.
All right, I have a motion. I got a second from Mr. Christian. I'll take that one. Sorry, Carl. All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next, we're moving on to the Russell County Planning Commission. We have Charles Edmonds and John Mason are up for reappointment for another four-year term for the Planning Commission. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Katie, I mean, Ms. Patton, may we do it as a slate?
You can. I mean, if you want to make the motion that way, it'd have to be second and approved by the majority, but you can't.
I'll second.
I got a motion and a second to approve Charles Edmonds and John Mason, put them back on the Planning Commission. All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on the list is the Cumberland Plateau Economic Development Commission. There's three seats open for that, for each is a one-year term.
I'll make a motion as a slate that we, uh, reappoint these three gentlemen.
Okay, I have a motion for a slate to reappoint the three. I need a second.
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next, we're coming to the citizen comment period. Um, I have a list of folks that have signed up to speak tonight. I will ask you to keep it to three minutes. I will call you if it's not, so I'm going to set the timer. We're going to start off with, um, Jim Little, Copper Ridge. Mr. Little?
As Ms. Wallace said, I'm Jim Little from Copper Ridge, District One. Uh, I guess I know most of you all up here, in fact, all of you. Uh, I'm coming to speak in reference to the landfill out of ignorance about everything that's going on, but also out of respect to our environment. Henry David Thoreau said that if you build a wall, a fence, or a border, you become a steward of everything within that. And as stewards of that, as every citizen of this county and U7 setting up here especially, you assume that responsibility of being a steward over all that we're blessed with. Also, in the Book of Genesis, we're told that God gave Adam and hence all mankind the responsibility over air, land, and sea. And anything that would be a hindrance or harm to that, we not only have violated our stewardship, but we have violated our obligation to our Lord and Savior. Now, that being said, I look, a few years back, my daughter served three years on a group called Stream Sweepers, cleaning up that Clinch River. Many young, young men and women have served on that in doing just that project. And if we in any way offer something, now, I don't know the details, I don't want to know, I don't know how all this information came down, and it's none of my business, basically. But it's all out there in the open, it seems, so I think it's a subject to be addressed. I would hate to think that her and the other young people that worked on Stream Sweepers, that 10 years from now, they can't fish in that river. That 10 years from now, I can't take a grandchild of mine down and enjoy the Clinch as I've had the opportunity to do so. There's been enough hazardous waste some was found around Cleveland back when Shiloh was serving on Stream Sweepers. She still maintains a scar on her leg from where there was an industrial tanks, 55-gallon drums that had been dumped into that river. The point is, you seven, along with all of us citizens, have a responsibility to see that doesn't happen again. We have a responsibility to see that even though great income might come in, we're trying to promote tourism, we're trying to promote land values, we're trying to attract people in, and I really don't see, maybe I'm just plain ignorant, unless you've been talking to my wife, you would agree that that may be the case sometimes, but that we are losing sight of our rural environment here. Would you want to, 10 years from now, be eating a fish out of that? Okay, thank you very much.
We're just here to thank the Board of Supervisors for allowing us to apply for the $6,000 out of the opioid settlement money to bring Mark Marrow here last, a couple of weeks ago. The settlement money was, is to help with the prevention of opioid addiction, and as you all know, paperwork had to be completed for it to be approved. And the county did not just give us money. Sadly, we had some people who really tried to destroy what was done here for our students in those two days by creating a distraction. Shame on anyone who feels an investigation is needing. Ask the students, the parents, the teachers, the principals, who really were there for those presentations. A personal opinion was given in one school by someone who doesn't live here and has nothing, no say in anything that happens in this county politically, and a campaign was started that it was a political ploy. But I'm here to tell you that three students out of hundreds of messages that Mark received were contemplating suicide. They all related how impactful the video of the mom whose son had committed suicide due to bullying and Mark's encouragement changed their path. I could never put a price on a child's life or what a parent would go through to get a phone call like that. So I can understand why people would want to destroy all of the good that came out of those two days, and we hope that they never get a phone call like that mom got. So sadly, I hate that it had to be made into something that it was not, and we apologize for any problem that it caused. But we just want to say we're grateful for all the students, the teachers, the staff, the adults that were impacted positively, whether in the school or the community night's events. Our struggle for our students is real with bullying, drugs, alcohol, and all the other pressures they face, and we just want to thank you all again.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Next is Tony Smith.
A little slow way to push that button. Excuse my looks, I normally am a very handsome man, but my mule knocked my, broke my upper teeth, knocked two bottom teeth out. I didn't curse, and I, I didn't hit him. But anyway, I'm here on a serious, very, very, very serious matter. Every one of you, think about this. I don't know if you've seen them or not. When I was young, slake dumps were on fire everywhere. It's on fire. I mean, it burnt the place down, it stunk, worse than it stink, you could smell. And according to what I can find out, too, at least maybe a year and a half ago, we thought they, they were some kind of industrial park, and I'm thinking, that'd probably be pretty good, you know, maybe even a place to put elderly people. But this trash dump's been in mind all along. And, uh, why are we just now hearing about it is one thing, but don't answer me, I, I got a few things to say here. I, I personally think we need to get the EPA involved. Y'all may have done got them, but I don't see how it could went through. But let me tell you what, I wrote down today, a few things from my memories. All right, we've had dust forever. The farm I live on was called Dust Farm. I'm 65, and it was the Dust Farm when I was five. Okay, then, but before that, we had mustard gas. It's been a kind of a rough life over in Cleveland, lucky to have E taste, maybe even ears. But, and then we, and then we got more dust. It's a lawsuit of my grandfather, got the community semi cleansed. Big money for everybody. It helped. It worked. You got to fight the system, I mean, I'm not suggesting y'all are the system, but there is a system, whether it's, uh, no matter where it's at, from the federal on down. All right, then we got a power plant, got the dust it put out. Then a trash dump was put in next to a lake, 10 feet of each other. The wastewater leaked into the roadside ditch, I mean, right there, it was coming out, just like coal seam. Stunt, I only got it straightened out. All right, we got water from Chaney Creek on this side coming into this. We got the lake, we got Dump Creek. I mean, how many Russell County need to die from this, you know? This is not a, a good thing, trash, New York trash in our country. Why don't New York take their own trash? We're back here in the mountains. But I understand the density, because when you come out of Cleveland, if it's 10, 10, 30, it was a real good place to grow tobacco, but when you come out, you were in the mountains, you know what I'm saying? You were in the sunshine. It's different. The density holds down over there, and that's why we got mustard gas, trash, 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 and everything else. I was going to add something to that, but I believe that would be wrong, Lee. I think that's the ones that oppose us, take no good recipe for rats, or maybe we can sell them to the community, maybe we can farm them, you know? I don't know. But what this is going to come, I mean, you got New York trash, Bristol trash, all kinds of trash. I'm out of time. But who's, I'd just like to know, who's against this new board? Is that too much to ask? Nobody can raise a hand.
No comments tonight.
No comments tonight.
Thank you for your comments. You come back next week and finish your story, or next month.
Want to get comments?
You'll get three more minutes.
Your, your district is under the worst.
Fair is fair, Mr. Smith. Thank you. Jackie Yates, are you in the house?
Well, I didn't really want to do this, because I, here I am. There's not, not two people in this county that's tried harder than me and Jennifer. We started with a credit score of about 420 and a Toyota pickup that we had to push-start every morning to go pick up trash. We've come a long ways, and we struggle trying to get our payments from people that everybody's struggling, and it ain't just us. And we don't want to give up what we do, and I've tried to get an answer on this for a while and just keep getting shot down. We started doing a tire route. We go to all the garages, the end of every month, and pick up used tires. Every garage that I pick up from, I keep an invoice of how many tires I pick up. If I go to the transfer station and the machine is there, I literally put them in the machine and get rid of them. They never touch the ground. No county workers ever touch them. I do that to help Brian and Chad and them guys, because they've been good to us. And my question to y'all is, is I know some people dumping cars and not paying for them because they're getting them from over the hill. And them same people told me that there's not as many cars over the hill now because we're doing it the right way. And all I'm asking is, is any, we're trying to do stuff like that and do these events like for the Towne Eleven and stuff to make it for the people to not pay in residential. So if it's something y'all could do to help me with the dump fee on the tires, because the people, the string sweepers I think they're caught, they don't pay a dump fee, but they're not picking as many of them up now because we're doing it the right way. Before us, you had everybody just get them and make the easy $20, throw them over the hill, pocket the money. I feel like I'm getting punished by doing it the right way. And if y'all would help me with the dump fee on that, I appreciate it. If not, we're going to quit doing it ourselves, but who'd haul them, just, they wasn't going to the landfill before us, you know? There's a big pile of them up there now because they're getting hauled in the right way. So if y'all can help us on that, we appreciate it. If not, we're all but done. I mean, our big truck was messing up, we had to get rid of it, we're back to pickups. We, we love what we do. We do. We got a lot of customers that we treat like family. We've got some customers, we take the bingo with us because they have no family. We love what we do, so. If y'all can help us with the tires, fine. If not, we're going to quit doing them, they'll go right back over the hill, I promise you. Because nobody was taking them to the landfill before us. And I was told, you know, they couldn't help me to do it, be fair to help me and not help others, well, ain't nobody else doing it. Who else are they to help? If somebody else wants to do it, I quit and let them start. They just don't need to go over the hills. That's all I got to say, I guess. And if I can get an answer on that pretty quick, because, I mean, I don't know why we can't get some kind of answer tonight. If we can't, we can't.
Thank you, Mr. Yates.
All right.
You're, you still have some time. I don't want to interrupt you.
Well, I just want to say, if y'all can't help me, at least help these school teachers. Without them, we're done. I mean, there's plenty of money in this county, plenty of money. It just ain't distributed out the right way. Teachers need to get what they deserve, too.
Thank you, Mr. Yates. Next on the list is Mike White. Did I get that right?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. How are y'all this afternoon? Um, I'm here because, um, we have property basically across the street from Moss Three. I am 150% against this landfill for, for one simple reason. Well, there are several reasons, you know? One, I, we acquired the property for rest and relaxation. We have Lake Bonaventure. We have our hunting area. I have built, and, and our company has built landfills in Virginia, Tennessee, and North Carolina. We built most of the transfer stations here where they took all the trash to Bristol. You know, that landfill down there was supposed to be 70-year landfill. They filled it up in 23 years because they took trash from everybody. It was all about the dollar. That's all it was about, plain and simple. And, and we feel if, if, that's what this landfill will be, if y'all agree to put it in, will be all about the dollar. Bringing trash from New York, bringing trash from Pennsylvania. You know, they, they, they train trash from Chesapeake and Norfolk to Kentucky right now. You know, the leachage from this stuff coming out of there, it's toxic, it's, it's biohazard. You know, it's chemical, it's, it's just, it's, it's dirty, it's nasty. You know, right now, Chaney Creek is one of the cleanest creeks since they closed the mines down. It's one of the cleanest creeks in that area. And so is Buffalo Creek in the North Clinch, the North Fork of the Clinch. You know, I'm, I, you know, I'm not a tree hugger or, or anything like that, but I believe in conservation. I believe in doing stuff right, but I am against the landfill 100%. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. That ends the public comment list, but I will say, if you are here and did not sign up on this list and you want to have a word here for your three minutes, you're welcome to do so.
Can I get an answer on the cars tonight? Do I have to quit me a bit, Randy?
No, sir, we just, maybe. Let us get through this meeting. Come tell me your name, your address, where you live, who you are.
My name's Jared Ring. Uh, I live at 149 Calvary Baptist Road in Castlewood, uh, not terribly far from the site of the proposed landfill. Um, I'm 26 years old, I got my degree in computer science. Out of my graduating class, I think the top 10, I am one of two who remains. I did not want to leave this place. I love Russell County. I love Appalachia. I have had to work to remain here due to the lack of jobs available in my profession. And now, there could be a landfill less than five miles from my home. And I, I think I speak for a lot of young people when I say it is difficult to remain in this place due to the lack of jobs. And it, it just adds insult to injury if we put a landfill here as well. And I have a very hard time believing that, uh, none of the trash from it will end up in the Clinch. I mean, polymer waste has a decay time of centuries. So some of the waste that will very likely end up in this landfill will be in this county, polluting our rivers, polluting our land, longer than Russell County has been a county. It takes centuries for some polymer waste to decay. And, uh, I just, I can't believe that there would be an incentive good enough for us to entertain the notion of this being here, because no short-term gain is worth the centuries of problems that will be left to our children. And it's hard enough to remain here without the property being devalued further by the landfill, without, uh, the shift to agrotourism being damaged by having a landfill in an area that's been relatively untouched since the mines in Moss Three itself went out. There, I believe categorically, there are hundreds of reasons that this is not a good idea ecologically or economically, and, uh, I, I would encourage all of you to think about the impact that this will have, not just in the next 70 years, but after that. I mean, because a, as I mentioned a moment ago, much of this stuff will be here for centuries if this comes to pass, and, uh, I will likely live to see it. So, uh, speaking from a younger person's perspective, I, I would ask all of you to bear that in mind and oppose this landfill every step of the way.
Anybody else want to speak on this? Any topic for public speaking? Come on up and give me your name and address.
My name is Linda Fletcher, and I live in Lebanon.
My name is Linda Fletcher, and I live in Lebanon, 36 Barton Drive, Lebanon, Virginia. And I worked in Cleveland for 35 years. And I watched that community, at this point, it's been almost 50 years ago. I watched how things have changed over the years with the loss of the mines and the loss of employment in the area, the downsizing of the power plant. That has really badly affected that community. The closing of two schools has happened since I started working there. And from a personal point of view, when I was a little girl, there was a landfill in Lebanon. And most of you folks are probably not old enough to remember that. But it was right across, on the other side of the hill from my house. Up Olfin Castle Road, up a hall. It stunk. You had smoke. You had stray animals. You had all kinds of stuff that you didn't want in your backyard. And I'm sure if one day to time we asked you, would you like to have a landfill across from your house, your farm, I am pretty sure that most of you would say no. I know we're in the economic hard times. I'm also an employee of Russell County School System, part-time. Now, I worked for Russell County School System for 35 years. I have been blessed to know many wonderful people. And I know that when money is hard, we try to think of ways that we can improve our situation. But I truly, with all my heart, believe. And I don't live over there. And I don't live close to over there. It's not going to affect me personally in my backyard. But I think you really need to think about, is this worth the cost? Down the road, is this worth the cost? I can remember when they would let, um, the polluted water from the mines into the river over there, dead fish floating along. We don't want that here. And I really hope you all will really, really consider and think, if this was my community, if this was my backyard, if this adjoined my farm or my house, would I want it there? And I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, got another one. All right.
Hi, I'm Vicky Kits, um, with the Virginia Education Association. I'm UNISERV Director. We have an office here at 232 East Main Street in Lebanon. And I just wanted to reiterate what Dr. Hooker said in her presentation. She did reference a salary study that the BEA done for '22, '23. But I've also have data for the '23, '24 for Region Seven. And unfortunately, Russell County at every step of the way is at the bottom of the list for Region Seven. We know this isn't anything new, but we want to help Russell County Board of Supervisors and the School Board to work to fix this issue. It is important to retain and attract quality instructors from the top, from our superintendent, down to our custodians, because we want quality people in our schools for our students. And we know that there needs to be a legislative fix for this. The funding mechanism doesn't work. And we have legislated and lobbied for years to get this changed. J-LARK and their report continuously state that this is an issue. And we want to work together. Oftentimes, people don't see the Virginia Education Association as being pro-public education for Southwest Virginia, but we really are. And we want to help all of our localities in Southwest Virginia to be able to raise their salaries so that our folks can pay their bills. And they're not working two and three jobs just to pay their bills and have student loan debt that is crippling many of our employees and many of our teachers. So I do, uh, look forward to how Alonso is going to be working with Dr. Hooker in this audit so that we can see how it can be most efficient with our funds. But we also want to work on how we can help y'all legislate at the local and state levels and regionally to help fix this issue. Again, it's not a problem just in Southwest Virginia. Teacher retention and attraction is a problem in all of Virginia right now and across the nation, because when people are going to school and they look at what teacher salaries are, and then they look at what IT and other things are, they're not going to the Schools of Education, they're going otherwhere. So we need to find ways that we can get people into the schools to educate our students so that they can come back to live in Russell County and be productive taxpayers. Thank you so much.
Well done, Ms. Kits. Thank you. I'll entertain someone else if you're ready to come up.
I see.
Ms. Chumley?
My name is Jennifer Chumley, and I want y'all to know this fell into my lap, this issue. And my land adjoins this. I've got 400 acres at stake here. So I've got skin in this game, as you could speak to say. Can y'all not hear me? Does that work? So this issue fell into my lap. You know, it was a concerned person that came and told me about it. And from there, I started researching, and I found out tidbits along the way. The issue is, we've done this once in Cleveland. We've been through this economic, environmental damage. You know, we've done this. We've washed our houses of coal dust. We've watched the coal trucks go through and private entities own coal mines, and all that happens is a fine, you know, it's just a fine, another fine, and they kick the can down the road. So we don't want this, and I don't think you guys would either. And I also think it is very beneficial that you look at how the wind blows. Every little, I know you will, but every little aspect of this. And most of the places that are going to be affected of this are going to be at higher levels. I mean, I know plenty of these guys' houses that are going to be affected. And it's going to affect our children. And you guys have said it over and over again, that you want to protect the children. This is protection for our children, the children that are here today that will be here tomorrow. This is the protection for the children. And further, I'm going to add that I don't appreciate threats. And we should not be threatening the public for finding out something. That's simple, and that shouldn't happen at all. And I think that I made apology on that one. But I think that you guys have some control. And I understand, you know, there's an ordinance that says that a private landfill can go in here. But this is about money, and it's always about money with these guys. We've dealt with this in Cleveland. We've dealt with it too many times, and we're not willing to do it again. It's that simple. And we're going to stand and fight. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Chumley.
Hi, my name is Angie McGlaughlin. I live on 7202 Finney Road in Honaker. And I'm here to speak about the private landfill at Moss Three. The landfill has many adverse effects, which include contaminated water supply. It contaminates air. It makes hydrogen sulfide, which is the main byproduct of landfills, which is a colorless gas. It's poisonous, corrosive, and flammable, and has the foul odor of rotten eggs. The release of methane gas is 20 times more hazardous than carbon dioxide and entrapping the heat within the atmosphere. The increased rates of cancer is a effect of the landfill waste. A 12% increase in the risk of birth defects, including malformations, the nervous system, the skeletal, increased risk of premature births, lower average birth rates. And no matter what you do, leaks will happen. Some time or another, leaks are going to happen. And when it does, it's going to demolish our county that we have spent thousands and thousands of dollars trying to make the Clinch a wonderful place, a tourist attraction. I just think that it's really a mistake. If Russell County needed a landfill to put our trash, I think it would be a lot different than having a private company come in and say, and hey, we're going to send it through on the rails, we're going to truck it in. Y'all are just going to be stuck with it. And I think it really needs to be stopped before it started. I know that they say that we can't stop it. But not too many months ago, you passed an ordinance banning any private, uh, family planning clinics from coming into Russell County. You should be able to ban any private landfills from coming into the county. And I really think that should be the first step, and I really think it should be done fast before so much money is spent going into this, that they say, well, if you didn't want it, you should have stopped it before. So, anyway, that's all I got. Angie McGlaughlin. Yeah. I live on Finney Road in Honaker. Was there any other information you needed? What, name or? Thank you.
David.
Hello.
David Miller, 12116, New Garden Road, Honaker. Not here to talk about landfill tonight, although it seems like it's a pretty hot topic. But, uh, I'm here to talk about, uh, an instance I had with the PSA in May. And I've talked to some of you individually, and I thought, well, maybe we'll bring it out more publicly and see if, uh, something can be done or something should be done or whatever. In May of this year, I had unfortunate time. I spent a month in the hospital with my uncle, just day and night. So my 88th water bill would come due, and, uh, I said, well, I forgot to pay it. I think most people probably have had that happen. And so I come here to pay my taxes, which, by the way, is over $1,000. That's, that's another, another thing. So I go to pay my water bill 17 days after the due date. 17 days after the due date. A cutoff notice had been issued. And my options were leave it off, pay $100 for reconnect fee, 17 days, pay $100 for reconnect fee, or give them a voided check where they can start deducting out of my checking account, because I'm not responsible enough to pay my bills. So that infuriated me. I said, this is extortion, this is, this can't be right. So I came out to my truck. I did a brief research and found that the code of Virginia requires a 30-day notice. I sent that information around to some of you. I sent that information to, uh, the Chair of the PSA Board. I got a call from the Chair of the PSA Board. He said, we don't have to follow that code. We're good on 15 days. It's on the back of our bill. And it's clearly on the back of the bill. And I, my statement then was, you can't put something on the back of the bill that supersedes code. That was the Friday before Memorial Day. And I said, okay, send me something that says you can't, you don't have to follow code. So that was on the Friday before Memorial Day, the last Friday of July. He called me back and said, we found out that it is in fact 30 days. I said, what took so long? I said, I found it in just a few minutes researching. And it said, the, the PSA is chartered under Chapter 51, Article 2, Section Title 15.2, and the code is 15.25138. It clearly says 30 days is required. So my question was then, people that have been wrongfully disconnected, because if anybody was disconnected from 15 to 30 days without notice, then they were wrongfully disconnected. Anybody that was charged that money from 15 to 30 days, they were wrongfully charged. So my question was, how are these people, how many people are there? How are these people going to be made whole? And who is going to be held accountable? Because it's not something, one comment was said, well, we can't just look at the code every day. The code hasn't changed, as far as I can tell, in the last 30 years. So my question is, how did this happen? Who's going to be held accountable? How many people are impacted? And how are they going to be refunded? We can't just say, well, the PSA can't afford it, because I know one man, the day after I was cut off, that found out he was disconnected on fixed incomes less than $1,000 a month, and he had to pay the $100. And he hasn't got his money back. So anybody that wrongfully charges somebody, which it seems as though they have, how, how are we going to correct? And that's, that's my question. Who's going to be held accountable? How's it going to be corrected? And what's going to be done going forward? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anyone else for public comment?
Thomas Reed, 3877, Jesse Mill Road, Cleveland, Virginia. I, I'm opposed to the landfill in every single way. My grandpa was a coal miner, provided for his family. That's the whole reason my family's here. They reclaimed it for a reason, be back for nature. If we want to have this state park come through and any of it do any good, nobody's going to want to smell trash. They're not wanting to see trucks hauling trash going down the road everywhere. My dream as a kid was to live in Cleveland. I was lucky enough to get my house that I own now. I have a disabled daughter. All right. I want to work my guts out to pay this house off to leave it to her. How good is that going to do her 15 years down the road? 20 down, 20 years down the road, when the air quality and all this is just horrible? I just ask y'all really think and decide not to let this happen, because you're going to ruin a good region, a good place for people to have dreams and can raise a good family and not worry about crime and all this other stuff that you have everywhere else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. One minute.
Jeremiah Neal, from 317 Ivy Ridge Road, Cleveland, Virginia. Uh, currently sit on the board, council board for the town of Cleveland. I totally oppose the landfill coming to where I've known nothing but home for my whole life. Have a family there. And I'm pretty straight and simple to the point. If you would, is it about money? Is it, there's other ways to make money? If not, I understand that completely. But what I don't like is secretivity in such projects. I mean, that affects, as you've heard everyone here say, not just us, for years and years down the road, strict environmental qualities, river qualities, air qualities, every sort of pollution quality you can think of. And I don't count a comment. I'm against it, and I believe that if it's put in, a lot of changes will be made as far as people that are elected in office. Because the people will, the people will stand up for what they believe in, whether it's passed or not. That's all my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Anybody else? Ms. McGlaughlin? There didn't seem to be anybody running up here. I'll let you go again. We don't normally, but I will.
I'm not speaking on the landfill right now. All I want to say is, the way that the Board of Supervisors meetings are conducted during the public comment phase, that I think if someone takes off work to come here to bring up an issue, that somewhere or another during that time, something needs to be answered so that they don't have to come back here like three or four or five months. Because when you come and you ask something, and everybody's just like, sorry, can't talk to you. You know, it's against the rules. It's really disheartening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eaton. And I will tell, uh, Ms. McGlaughlin, I'm sorry. And I will tell you that usually we handle such matters at the end of our meeting when we can. The agenda is set, just so you know. You call and ask. Anybody else? All right.
My name's Chris Axum. I live at 334 Shotgun Hollow Road, Cleveland, Virginia. It's about a quarter of a mile, if, if that, from where this is being proposed to go in. I've raised my family over there. Uh, I know if, if it goes through, we'll probably have to leave. I mean, the, the effects of this, I can't fathom. The runoff into the, into the Clinch, into Lake Bonaventure, they just got through. Like other people have told y'all, they just got through with the, the stream reclamation. They cleaned the Clinch up. And, you know, y'all do work for us. And if you're about the kids, like you say you are, then something needs to be done to stop this. I know there can be ordinances put in place. I know there can be ordinances put in place, because there was ordinances put in place to stop the clinics come into this county. And I just wanted to let y'all, let y'all know how I stand on it. If if y'all lived within within a quarter of a mile, or if it's in your backyard, you'd have a different view of it, I'm sure. But and we was misled about what was going to come in down there. Supposed to be the industry come in down there to create jobs, not a landfill that's going to destroy everything that's been built over the last fifteen or twenty years over the Clinch River and everybody's lives and having to deal with all the health problems and stuff. But y'all need to think about this, and I'm sure you will, before any rash things are signed or done with it. But this is something that's going to affect generations to come if it comes in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Axum.
Nathan Kaiser, I live on Green Valley Road, Mr. Breeding's district. I just want to say that all of this has started to come to light now about the public landfill or the private landfill. And I think there's probably a lot of misconceptions or misunderstandings or assumptions being made. And I don't know what the answer is for all this. Uh, I don't know enough about it, but I will tell you this, it's out there, and you all need to be fully transparent. You need to have someone come and explain to the people because they need to know what's going on. You need to have someone, full transparency, put it out there, lay out what's going on and what can or can't be done about it. Because we don't need this kind of stuff happening in Russell County if we don't know ahead of time what's going on. And understand there's a process, and there's public hearings and things like that. But this is out there, and people need to know, and they have a right to know. And I stand up for the people one hundred percent in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Anybody else? Public comment before we close. Public comment. Anybody else in the other room? Can you hear me? All right.
As many of you know, I'm Ty Harris. I live over in Cleveland. I'm one hundred percent against landfill, have always been from the day one, I mean, that I heard about it. I have been threatened by some of the board members, and I will not stand for that. That's not going to happen. The people need, and according to some of you, the this landfill has been in the works for going on seven years now. And this just ain't going to happen. I mean, we're not going to let it happen. And I'm running for supervisor, and I will not let this happen, and I will stand against this. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Harris, thank you very much. Anybody else? One more time.
Uh, yes, I'm Florida farmer. I live at sixty eight nineteen Cleveland Road, Cleveland, Virginia, at the end of the bridge. I went in debt for all that down in there, so our little old town wouldn't be destroyed. We got the park out of it, the campground and everything. And I just don't see bringing anything in there that's going to upset people that wants to come over, because they brag on our park all the time, and the campground, but it's peaceful and quiet. They don't have to worry about stuff. We got enough people over there that's busy stealing everything. Now, if they steal that trash, that'd be good if it come in. It's the way I see it. But I don't, I buy their bit of that. I've been dead over a hundred and some thousand dollars to save Cleveland. And I'm on the town council, too. So I'll probably die before I get all that paid for, but I just don't believe in that. And back years ago, there was one downtown golf course. If y'all remember that, I don't know if y'all was old as I am or not, they'd be trashed up down there. I never had them go down there. But I just wanted y'all to know. I hope y'all help our little town, because it's hard. Half the time, people don't even know where Cleveland is. But we've been putting it out there, you know, we got the park and everything. And I I'm really proud of it. I moved away for years because there wasn't a whole lot you could do, you know. I worked in carpet mills and everything. I've worked for head starts, worked for the schools. I've done a little bit of everything. I'm hoping my child stays. She's going to be a lawyer, so I'm hoping she she will hang around, too. Because I've been wanting her to come to Cleveland and try to open her office or something to bring stuff in. And it's just like Cleveland. I thought we was going to get some little stores built and everything, but we didn't get, you know, nothing like that. We couldn't even fill up our parking lots that we supposed to had over there. There's one one old car sitting in there for like the last five years. But I just wanted y'all to know, I just don't approve of of it ruining, you know, our community. Now, if y'all could find it somewhere, put it somewhere else out of town or way y'all, that'd be different, but. And there's supposed to be graveyards over in there where y'all want to put that at. Indian burial grounds and everything, and that's what I worry about, too. And I worry about the drain off going in those little creeks that's over there and stuff. But I just wanted y'all to know, I just hope pray that y'all don't do that and let it go through. Maybe look around, find somewhere else to put it or something. Because, you know, you see all these signs, Cleveland, like Virginia's for levers, Cleveland's beautiful, you know, Virginia's beautiful. So we need to keep it that way. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you. One more time, anybody else? Ms. Couch?
I guess most of y'all know I'm the mayor of the town of Cleveland. I'm totally against this. We've worked really, really hard to have what we've got over there. And I do hope that y'all would decide not to do this, to bring it into our community. I think everybody here has really said enough. I just want you to know, I'm totally against it, and I appreciate y'all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Couch. Anybody else? Public comment? Okay, I'm going to close public comment at this time. Board, we don't have any constitutional officers that are here tonight. I don't see any. County attorney reports and requests.
Madam Chair, I don't. I don't have anything this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Patton. Moving along to the county administrator reports and requests.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First on the county administrator reports is, as we have spoken, it's been mentioned before, I put it into the board package to give them somewhat of a little bit more information from the state's perspective of what J. Lark had looked at on Virginia's teachers and their shortage of teachers. Actually, in the state of Virginia, there's ninety five hundred teachers short that. Here we go. Why did everybody have time to excuse? We're about ninety five hundred teachers short. So of course, the Board of Supervisors, like I said before the pandemic, and then even during the pande- pandemic, we became, there's a greater shortage. There was a less skill sets, less people that were going into it, also less people going into law enforcement. There was two career paths that there seemed to be either taking different career paths or not attending those career paths. So what the governor did with the law enforcement, he used his budget surpluses to bring up the bases in on the constitution officers. And that's one of the perspective that the J. Lark report is looking at, like the state of Tennessee. The state of Tennessee came in and brought up the base, whether you were in Knoxville or you were in the city of Bristol, they brought up the base based off the state budget of fifty thousand dollars. That then they started looking at additional things like whether it's a bachelor's degree, a master's degree, tenure, structure, steps, a compensation plan. So that's that's really, in a nutshell, what we're going to be looking at. But it also gives the insight on the J. Lark report of what the the state is looking at. And hopefully, they're they're going to be successful in this legislation. I know the board's going to be up there advocating, you know, with the school board, you know, try to get these additional funds for the teachers. Second thing is, again, we're back in Richmond again. This is the Virginia Department of Elections, the polling place, accessibility, it is complete. I had it on the agenda last time. This is new changes to the election rules and security. Everyone knows, is not aware of it, of all the issues that we've had over the last three or four, you know, elections. So the security has been tightened up. We have done what the Department of Elections has 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 tasked us with to do. So I think there's a couple of things that, a couple of schools that were making some minor corrections on a couple of precincts right now, right there.
And one's already been fixed, and the other will be by election.
Yeah. So one of the things that we're looking at is the accessibility of it, security, you know, continuity, IT wise, that we've got, these are fully operational, so we don't have a glitch. So we take this very serious, and we work with the Department of Elections. So next on the county administrator reports is the Southwest Virginia Community College. This is the annual scholarship banquet. This is just a note to the Board of Supervisors. Next is the Russell County Landfill Grandwater Solid Waste Permit. This is a closed landfill, by the way, so. The, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I did miss one. Sorry, I was getting ahead of the going up. Next one on the county administrator reports is the Virginia Opiate Abatement Authority, the the opiate workshop that Mr. Breeding and Ms. Di attended. We attended a day long session looking at counties and towns and nonprofits that came in and what they were doing with their abatement funding, and we were looking at different programs and partnerships. So between what we receive from the local funds, which we have a fund of that, we also have a venue, we also have an opportunity to go after state funding with the partnerships with either another county or another state organization or nonprofit. So we're looking at those venues, too. Now, to the Russell County Landfill Grandwater Solid Waste Permit, number two fifty eight. That is, of course, what we Clinch River, hang on just a second. This is a big agenda. As you can see, on our landfill, solid waste permit number two fifty eight, this is a review and the calculations of, you know, the backgrounds, that we are meeting all compliance with federal EPA and state law. So we are meeting those regulatory requirements within our own landfills, and we do continue doing that. So next is actually, that's ironic, the AEP Industrial Landfill. Whether y'all knew, a lot of people don't, in Cleveland, there is another landfill that's in Cleveland that is operational, and that is done by AEP. So it is it is classified as a landfill. It is maintained as a landfill, and it is inspected as a landfill. As as you can see on the map, this is the landfill that's where it's at, where it's located, is adjacent to the Clinch River. This is done and maintained with two retaining ponds, and it has been in place for, what, twenty four years? So it is in place. So that is a report on it. It is continuing to meet by law on solid waste permit, number two twenty three, number six twenty and six twenty four are in compliance. Next on the county administrator reports is the Virginia Compensation Board. As I mentioned before, that the state of Virginia, during their budgets, they fixed the law enforcement, the deputies, they raised their base pay during that time, and this is the, let me get to there we go. They raised the the salaries and the on the base pay of all of the constitution officers. That included the clerk's office, the commissioner of revenue, the treasurer's office, the deputies and a, let me see, that'll be a sending money. No, that's pretty good, on the treasurers. I think I got that one. But all the constitution officers were increased by two percent. During the previous budget, under the two year law, there was a biennial budget that had a five percent increase by law. All the constitution officers received that at the first of the year. This is a budget amendment, as everyone knew that the legislation was running late, and they were negotiating back before, back and forth between a tax break and, you know, teachers' raises, salaries, et cetera. Well, this is what came out. They did move it from a five percent to a seven percent. The constitution officers take effect December the first. The teachers, and I don't know why they did this, but they did, the teachers take place January the first. So December the first, constitution officers, January the first is the teachers' pay. So there's a there's a month difference. Don't ask me the logic in it, but it was the part of the budget negotiation. Next is the Clinch River, as y'all mentioned. This is is in your packet. This is a Clinch River State Park, the comprehensive comprehensive plan, master plan. This is part of the state parks that was discussed before. It is comprehensive tenure plan that looks at the park, the park development, its continuation, and that also includes the boat launch sites and and the the total comprehension plan over the next ten years that they're going to develop all the way into St. Pile to the state park. Next on the county administrator reports is we have the Dank Community Fair. This is Health and Educational Resource Fair. They'll be on Saturday, October the fourteen, two thousand twenty three, from nine thirty AM to two PM. This is at the Dank Crossing entrance for, and it has blood pressure checks, blood sugar checks, and health education by ETSU, and there'll also be medical resources there by Appalachian Healthcare Network, which is part of Valid Health, which is very good for the elderly or that, you know, if you get a chance, please attend. Next is the United is the VDOT Monthly Road System Report. As y'all can read through, it's it's still got all the list of what they're going to surf a street and seal. That's for the board's review and information. And we're coming out of the late season, so we will be looking at at the new paving schedule in the spring. So, you know, if you have a road that you want on, it'll be the time to come within the March. Next is the United Way Rule Summit. This is the summit that is in at the Southwest Virginia Higher Education on October the twenty sixth and twenty seventh. This, the United Way Rule is looking at putting a daycare center and working with their IDA at currently at the old nine one one building to give opportunity for more daycare services in that facility. So we'll be attending that that rule summit. Next is the county administrator request. The first one on the county administrator request is, of course, the annual audit engagement with farmer, with Robinson Farmer and Cox Associate. I need a movement, a motion and approval to proceed with the AFY twenty three audit of the county.
I'll entertain a motion for seventy five thousand dollars for an audit engagement, please.
Some movement, Chair.
Got a motion? I need a second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
This this is the same price we had last year. Is that correct?
There was a slight increase due to the Federal Single Audit Act. See, now we've got ARPA funds that have come through, so we have to pay for the additional audits. It's like having two audits in one. Jim Jacoby said, all agencies have to do.
Okay.
Any further discussion from that? I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Second on request is the Russell County Financial System software and maintenance upgrade. This is, I have talked with all the constitution officers, this is our current AS four hundred system. This is a an upgrade component that we either have to take, and I've talked to all the constitution officers, and they want to continue using the AS four hundred. If we look at a different system, we're looking at a six figure, another additional system, which is, it could be up between a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that we that, we, IT is expensive, so we're able to operate, we're comfortable with it. So is the State of Virginia. It does communicate and, and it's operable with the State of Virginia. So I need approval for the Russell County Financial System Software and Upgrade of $40,279.
I need a motion on that, please.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. I need a second. I got a second from Mr. Ray.
Discussion, please. Uh, I just got one question. What's the term limit of this software maintenance upgrade?
This is a five-year term.
So it lasts for five years? Okay, I just needed to know that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay. Next on is the Virginia Department of Fire. This is the FY24 Fire Program Agreement and Grant of $95,029. As you can see on this, this is the jurisdiction. This is their 100% allocation to FY24. This is for dispersments to the fire departments for purchase of equipment and training. It is a, it is a grant that's provided by the Department of Fire to all, all fire departments throughout the state. Um, they have an opportunity to take the 95,000, split it between our eight agencies. And it comes out about $11,000, $12,000, depending upon how they purchase and what they buy for additional equipment and training that they need. This is in addition to what the Board of Supervisors appropriates and what they receive from their other, uh, revenue venues. So this is on top of what we appropriate. This is from the Virginia Department of Fire and they need approval for the program agreement and the additional appropriations from the state of $95,029. So move.
I have a motion. I need a second.
I'll second.
I got several. I'll take any. Um, any further discussion hearing none? I'm moving along, sorry. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Next on the County Administrator Request is the FY2324 County, uh, Employee Salary Increase. When we approved the FY2324 budget, we included, um, a 5% by the biennium for all the employees, which was already in the code of Virginia. As you can see in the budget amendment, there has been a 2% increase, uh, into the Constitution officers and the teachers' pay. When we devote, developed the budget, we put the 7% in. We did not change it. We put the covenants into the resolution that whatever the state did, we would match it. So that way it would be fair and equal across all employees, Constitution officers, teachers and county employees. So it, it's hard, as you do this for a while, it's easier to take it down, which we had budgeted and left that component in to see what the state was doing. Because at the time, they kept saying it would be a week from now, two weeks from now, then it went into months. Then it, it kept being delayed. But the point was this, it's easier to take it down than it is to take it up. If I, we have to come before the board for a 2% increase in the budget for salaries, that's over the 1% requirement, which we would have to have a public carrying. So trying to speculate or what the state was doing in the General Assembly, we actually hit it on the head because we had been talking with them. And then we knew it would be between the current five, either a 1% or 2% between what the House negotiated and Senate wanted. So they did come out a, a 2%, which we have in the budget, which is already approved at that level. But the Board of Supervisors has to concur with that additional 2% for county employees.
And the board said they need a motion and everybody said,
So move.
Help me, help me out here. And I'm seconding that as your chair. I can do that. So I have a motion and a second for the 2%. Thank you goodness. All right, all in favor? None opposed, none extended. Thank you. Motion carries.
Next on the County Administrator Request is the Clinch River Little League, the 25, 24, 25 appropriation request. What, that's, that's correct, 24, 25. I got a request from the, uh, Clinch River Little League where they'll be using their appropriations next year to pay for the pavement upfront, almost like the, uh, you know, the additional funding that we gave to Glade Hollow, the new roof that we put on the, uh, press box at, at Honeacre. So they asked for their appropriation upfront, so they could get the total paving done and get it out, knocked out of the way. So I've already made those comments to the FY2425 budget. So I need approval for pre-approved appropriations from the 24, 25 for the Clinch River Little League.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second for the Clinch River Little League appropriation borrowing forward, as I call it.
Borrowing forward.
Any other comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, Chair. Next is a travel request by the library. Uh, to attend, actually, the rule summit in 26th and 27th. Uh, I need approval for that. Travel.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. I have a motion for a travel request for the library.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. I got a motion and a second.
And that, that travel is for the tickets, by the way. You gotta, each, when we go, we gotta pay for the tickets.
What's the, uh, the cost of that? The tickets is actually, uh, 150, it's, there's, I, we get it, they get a discount. So it's about 60,000, I think it's $65.00. Ours is 75, by the way. It's, uh, for two tickets, it's $115.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Next on Planning Commission Platts is, of course, got a motion to recommend approval of the plat for the Newbury and Stewart, correctly spelled, land. A motion. So I need approval for the Russell County Planning Commission Request on the attached survey that's in your packet.
I'll entertain a motion on the Planning Commission Plan.
I'll make that motion for you, ma'am, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Dye. I need a second. Got a second from Mr. Ray. Any further discussion on the plat? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr.
Ma'am, that concludes the County Administrator Reports and Requests.
At this time, we've come to the point in our meeting, we're going to have board discussion and reminders. And so I'm taking chairman's prerogative and I'm going first. So, Mr. Yates, you sit here patiently and I appreciate that. And, um, I want to make sure that we do something to help this tire situation and help our landfill and help everybody that we can. Mr. Yates has been really good. He's down in my community. That's a long way. And so we see your JJ trashcans everywhere, so I'm going to give you a plug. Everybody out there, call JJ to pick up your garbage. If you need house-to-house garbage, he comes. He comes. So I thank you. So on behalf of all of us here, we hear you. We do. And I insist that we do something.
Would you like a motion to that?
We're not on the agenda. That's not on the agenda, but you, you have to amend it. Mr. Lester is raising his hand slowly down there. You want to say something, Mr. Lester?
JJ, actually, I had trashed through JJ, so, and not to know, know nothing. JJ had approached us and the board does have venues to do it, but I don't know if you can do it tonight. And I'll explain the reason why. When you mentioned the nonprofit, uh, street sweepers, uh, street, stream sweepers, we'll get it second, right? In a second. My mind's going for the numbers. Um, you, that is a nonprofit. We can, we can donate that as to a nonprofit because they do it on an annual basis or randomly, not on a continuous basis. So you're a private entity. So that would be the Board of Supervisors picking out a single company and giving a specialized rate to one company. And that's not what, how they operate. Now, there is, Brian and I have looked at these programs on the tire and it is a great job. But what will need to be looked at is the companies that do this have the opportunity, all that do it have the same rate. Does that make sense? And to do that on a tipping fees and disposal fees, which Tim would tell you, we just started negotiating and we just approved the contract on the public carrying last week. So we could not nego, we didn't know where we were at in our disposal fees and tipping fees. So we didn't know if we was going to have to charge you more or, or the companies like you more or less on the ti, on the tires. So what I had conveyed to Brian is to make sure that after the regional waste management contract was approved, and we did, that we had the actual numbers to work for it. Now, the Board of Supervisors can pick a disposal fee or select companies that do these services and give it as a cross-the-board fee and the opportunity for all that do it. That way it's, it's, you're not getting advantage, but everyone that does it gets advantage at it. And we, and it does keep the tires out of our, our rivers and streams and sides and over the hill. But the board can approach it like that. But I'm going to tell you something. We keep dragging our feet on this issue and he's not going to be in business. And then you're going to have a major issue here that we've had for months because I've been in talks with you about it. Lonzo, I've talked to JJ about it. And it's not fair for people like that to doing a service. And it should be across the board. If anybody wants to do the tires, it should be across the board. And you shouldn't charge them these ridiculous fees for the service that they're doing.
And that's the fees.
I mean, they should get a waiver on it. I mean, if they get a waiver on it, doing a service for the citizens of the county and the businesses. I mean, these tires are going to go over the hill. They're in my district. I, I've talked to JJ about it. He went and cleaned up one, 147 in my district. And I, I appreciate it, but you shouldn't have to pay to have, and you went all the way down there and had them, you processed them yourself. I know you've done it. I don't know why we have to amend the agenda to address a critical issue like that.
It's a fee schedule that you have to amend. It's a fee schedule. Yeah, see, that's a, that's, that's set by the Board Super.
I understand.
And we can work on that. That's what we're, that's what we're going to do.
Board next time. If y'all want to move on it, I can bring the fee schedule up for the board. But it's a whole fee schedule.
That's okay.
You know what I'm saying? And it gives us an opportunity where the other ones just approved too. Like I said, we just got the waste, the tipping fees. We know what our disposal fees are now. So we can, we can give you a good price. We know what price to give you because we have our numbers now. Like I said, it was just finally approved. I think Carl, I, I think it was September of the night. He wants a waiver. To be able to take them down.
That's, that's up to the board. If you give it to one, you gotta give it to all.
How are you going to go, who's, who else is going to go pick them up?
I don't, I don't know, but whatever the terminology is, it has to be given to one and given to all.
See, we got other people that buys those permits too. Yes, two other people. That is correct. And if they did it, they would have to go under permit now and do it the same way you're doing it to get the advantage of that. If they didn't, they would not get it. Yeah. And y'all do a great job. I'll be the first one to attest to it. But,
Katie, do you have anything to say on that? I mean, how that works? I mean, you have anything about the fees and how you got to do it across the board or anything?
Well, it would require board action to change a fee schedule or to implement a waiver. And I would say because you are the government, when you do that, it has to be equal across the board. You can't just select one, um, provider and give them that incentive. So it would have to be available to anybody who wanted to avail themselves to it.
That's what I said. Nate, there's three. I mean, it, it would apply to all. That's what I was saying.
I'd say if he goes out of business, it's going to be a disaster across the county. Him and I have had an extensive conversation in the past.
Are you shredding them when you hit the, uh, transfer station? Are you doing that? Or are you, we doing it with our community workers? So you're doing it with our shredder? Okay. See, we need to look at that too, to make sure in case, liability, to make sure in case something happens, we have to address that too. Okay, I'll bring it for the board.
Let me ask you this. If, since this is not on the agenda, if we commit to try to get this worked out just as soon as possible, even if you have to quit taking them for a month or so, we'll, we'll try to work it out. I mean, is that satisfactory? I, I think it should be waived too. I mean, and, and I don't see why we just, you know, we couldn't be talking about a tremendous amount, Lonzo.
No.
I mean, trash is eating us alive anyways.
There is a, Tim will tell you, Carl will tell you, tires is the most expensive trash you're taking.
Well, I'm, I'm sure by weight, they probably are, you know, but they get billed, the tipping fee on them is the same as any other piece of trash. We have to haul them, right?
Yeah, you, we have to pay to haul them. Yes.
To me, it's a great service.
I don't think we disagree with anything here. It's just how we get there and make it fair and equal and equitable and transparent for the entire county. So we hear you. Mark it down. We hear you. What's the board's pleasure? You want to, um, just discuss this some more? Do you want to let this ride till next month?
I think if there's anything we can do tonight, we do it tonight.
I'd like to make a motion to give the County Administrator the authority to, to issue a waiver equally across the board to be able to take care of these tires, disperse them like they should be.
I have a motion.
I'll second that motion.
I have several seconds. Ms. Campton?
Is there no way that these tires cannot be recycled at any point?
Not that we know of, I don't guess.
The machines that we have will not take the metal out. If you, the machines that shred, that takes the metal out of the tires, it, it is, it's about a quarter million dollars just by, yeah. So the machines that we have do a very good job at breaking them down, as JJ would say. But it's the wiring inside, just environmentally, you cannot. We would love to take it to the, you know, playgrounds and put it down as much, but with the wire, you can't do it. Kids get it right.
Okay, I have a motion and a second and much discussion.
The only thing I would suggest is just making the motion really clear and what you're, so, and let me make sure we're saying this right. Is that the motion is to, for the board to issue a waiver for the tipping fees for the disposal of, of certain tires? I mean, I, I think your minutes need to be clear on what the waiver applies to.
You do get in those for tires.
All tires.
Yeah, tires, tires that would be covered on a permit that's purchased by the county, by, by the provider.
Okay, I just think the motion should, so it will read that way.
Make it clear, make it clear and that'll, I'll stay. Make it clear, make it clear and that'll, I'll stand with that motion.
Is this contingent on anything? Are we just good to go with this? Flat, flat motion. No contingency with Mr. Lester and what he can work out and let you know.
You don't want to wait it.
Are we through debating? All right. I'm seeing a nod. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Now, we're still in board discussion, so I took the privilege of taking chairman's prerogative. Mr. Lovelace, you got anything else?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Ray?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Eaton?
Uh, one thing here, uh, I'd like to present this to the highway safety committee. Are you on that, Carl? Okay. Who else? Just you? Tim? Uh, I've been able to talk to VDOT about a lot of the areas where we don't have proper signage. Uh, we've had some accidents in our county and took out some signs. One is Lynn Springs up near Stanley Kings, uh, had a really bad accident up there and, uh, the signs never did get put back up. Also throughout the whole county, we're experiencing a lot of speeding, terrible bad. And, uh, especially during school, uh, I've got calls like crazy about people, uh, it's been very dangerous. I don't know how we address this. I know up around Lynn Springs and some other areas like that, there's been some speeding and by the time they do call law enforcement, it takes them forever to get up there and then they're already gone. So I don't know what we can do to address that, but, uh, I think proper signage and some additional children playing signs would be critical to have in some of the neighborhoods, uh, to let them know that, uh, that kids are playing in those areas. I mean, they playing roads up there and shoot ball and stuff.
VDOT don't do the, uh, uh, kids playing signs.
I know, but we have the ability, from what I understand, Lonzo, don't we have the ability to enact and make our own signs for areas in our county?
Just the 911, sir.
Just the 911?
Yes, sir. And a temporary sign in case of emergency. If VDOT don't have the time to do it, we can put a temporary sign until the current.
How, how would that work, how would that work as far as like with children playing and stuff like that within the 911 area?
Uh, as far as the children that play, that comes in from the VDOT perspective. So it, they have to evaluate it, but it's very, it's rare that they, they put road, you know.
Children playing.
Children playing.
They said they don't do that no more.
Yeah. It's, it's rare.
You have to buy your own off of the Walmart or Amazon or where.
Our neighborhood has that and they bought, our neighborhood bought their own.
Oh, they did?
There is different, yeah. There's different, different signs. There's, yeah. Yeah, you can buy them on your own, but if it's a, like.
Do we have to get a special permit from VDOT to put them on the right way? We don't? Okay.
They put, they put them on theirs, like in, on adjacent pieces of property, they'll put kids at play. I've seen different types, different sizes.
I'll look at some of my contentious monies that I have and see if we can't do that or get some signs made in some of my area districts.
Anything else, Mr. Eaton?
No, thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Breeding?
The only thing I have is, you know, we've got the election coming up and our next board meeting will be the day before the election, which is, and I'd see how the board feels about just moving that from the first Monday to the second Monday, the board supervisor meeting. Because I know several people have, people have run it against them. I understand Mr. Lester has to secure, provide security for all the polling spaces. Isn't that right, Lonzo?
We had, we had to make sure the IT is up, security is up, maintenance is up, the buildings have access.
Is that, is that going to put you in a bind?
It will.
I know what the answer is. I know. So I just.
I'll take, uh, let's go for a second.
Would, would the board agree to that, to move it?
I'm in favor of moving it.
Everybody? To the second Monday, yeah. That, because I know there'll be a lot of people out trying to get signed or anything else.
Recovering the town council, actually, the, the next month is, uh, yeah, that's good. I like to go to all of them.
Well, that's great, Randy, but we can't, we, we'd like to have you at all of them, but I mean, we just, sometimes we just, you know, have conflict that we can't get around, you know?
I got a VDOT meeting.
Well, I'll make, I'll make a motion then if we move the next board supervisor from the first Monday to the second Monday of the month.
Which is the 13th of November.
Everybody check your calendars and make sure that that, uh, works with you. My calendar seems to be clear that day.
I may, I may not be attending, but that's okay.
Second, okay, second Monday. Second Monday in November.
Doctor's appointment out.
13th, right?
Was there a second?
All right. We have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Ms. Dunn, you got anything?
Yes, I want to thank VDOT. They have worked with me on, uh, getting some ditches cleaned. Uh, it was needed because it was having, uh, water runoff and they worked with, uh, getting it cleaned up. I also want to thank Point Broadbent for getting the internet through Green Valley, up through the Loop, Corn Valley. And I also want to thank PSA for their review with, uh, Tassel County on, uh, getting water through Green Valley and Corn Valley. They did have a good, successful, uh, meeting there. And I want to thank all of them for checking on these things for me. That's all.
Very good, Ms. Dunn. Mr. Christian?